Okay, I'm on YouTube and a recording. Are those the two things that we needed? We're good?
We should be good to go.
All right, sorry for the delay, everybody. So working through the trials and trial and error of these hybrid meetings where some of us are onsite, some of us are not. So I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let the record show all board members are present. Three of us are virtual, four are onsite, or four members are also virtual. So do I have a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda?
Jenny, I'll make that motion.
Sue will second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Sue. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Girkey?
Aye.
Ms. Roser?
Aye.
Ms. Deppa?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Ms. Rose, no.
Aye.
All right, we have approved an agenda. We'll move to the first item, which is our list of topics for work session, which is Mary Reader is going to talk to us about revised fund balance transfer resolution. That's on tonight's agenda.
A couple of months ago, you got the board had approved the original fund balance resolution, transfer resolution, and that was sent on to the Minnesota Department of Education, and they came back asking that item number three be added to our resolution and revise it and then resend it back before they approve it. So it's just saying that our transfer will not interfere with the equitable delivery of distance learning or social distancing models, even though this transfer was decided well before COVID, they still want that information in there. So we added it to it, and that's all we need to do. That's the only thing different. The dollar amount stays the same. Teacher Union DTA had approved it, so no other change besides bullet point number three.
Okay.
And that will be on the agenda tonight for approval.
Yep, I saw that. Does anyone have any questions for Mary on that? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the work session is the 21-22 school calendar, which Matt sent out in his Friday email.
Yes, if you've noticed, were you all able to access the calendar, the proposed draft of the calendar?
Yep.
Okay, good. So I don't think I need to present my screen. But obviously, it's in a new format. We think it's a new and improved format. Thank you to Paul Downer, who put this actually into a Google Doc. So as we work through the version, we'll be able to make changes much quicker, and it's collaborative, so folks can access it with multiple sites instead of sending it out in one version. We had a discussion, I talked to you, I believe, a few weeks ago, just about the idea of, you know, we have another late start for Labor Day. But the consensus from the committee and the consensus from the board was that, let's just start with one, we'll go with one version of the calendar. There was some original discussion of starting before Labor Day, and then having two versions be board approved, and I think that we'll just go with the one version, so everybody will know. Officially, we're going to be asking the board to approve this calendar at the next board meeting in February, just so we can get it out to public, so people can start planning and seeing what the school calendar looks like. There's two major items that are not listed in the calendar yet. We will be meeting in early February with the calendar committee one more time, and that's to articulate the rest of the conferences by each of the schools, and when they're going to be. The other one is the additional professional development day that is in the calendar, but still needs to be voted on by the teacher group for a two-year commitment to have that additional professional development day, because it's not originally in their contract. So it's an MOA that we approve every two years. So that's got to be taken care of. But as far as start and end times for the school year, the breaks, we have a table under each of the months of what do the orange and yellow and blue and greens look like. And there's a grid at the bottom, shows our quarter days, shows the semester days as well, and then the total teacher days and the total student days. So. And obviously, new this year, or not actually, in this year, we're living it, we haven't done it yet, but also for future coming years, we will do makeup days, we will not cancel school, we will be facilitating flex learning days that will allow our students and teachers still to have a student-teacher contact day virtually. So. Other than that, highlights that we have in here, we did build in a spring break again this year. It's pretty close to what it is this year, as far as the calendar. With the last student day for students will be Friday, June 3rd, and then graduation on that Sunday, June 5th, and the last day for staff is June 6th. So.
Yeah, I notice it looks pretty similar to this year.
Yeah, it's a pretty similar calendar that we are, that we have this year.
So the only thing I was thinking about, I know we kind of joked about this, and we talked about it last week, but is this new version, which I really do like, is it compliant for colorblindness? Like, it's a serious question for folks who might not, because there's no symbols on it. I think that's part of why we might have done the symbols in the past. I don't know. Do we need to do both? Like, is it legible for people who don't see colors?
It should be. Paul did some research, and Paul, you can weigh in in here, but he did some research and looked at a number of other districts, and a vast majority of them are color. But we can double-check, too, if it's gonna, if it can meet the requirement, you know, you're talking about if it's like somebody who can't.
Somebody who doesn't be able to understand it because they don't see colors. Yeah, I'm not an expert on it. I just know that for a lot of things like this, when you publish only one version, and the only way to differentiate or to read it is through colors, you have to make sure you either pick the right colors or offer some sort of other symbols to go along with it, and I just don't know. It might be something that we just do a couple minutes of research, just to make sure we're not leaving anyone out by publishing it this way, but I do like it.
Yeah, we can do that. We also did articulate next to the color and the bolded dates what that actually is. For example, in October, the 11th and 12th are high school, intermediate, and elementary school conferences. That's still got to be tweaked, but at least it articulates it. But we'll do some research to make sure that we're in compliance.
Yeah, no, I mean, that is a good point. It does say the date and what it is, so. Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I like the version. It's good.
Version seems to be consensus from the board to like the version, too. So we'll meet one more time in committee, just to flesh out the last details here. And then, but I think the board is more concerned about just when do we start, when are the breaks, when's the end of the quarter? Conferences will come from your building, mostly in communication.
Matt, I think it's, I think it's important to know that our hands are tied with that starting before Labor Day. I think you said that, but just for the people listening, there's just nothing we can do as a school district there, correct?
That's correct. You know, back in the days when we were under construction, that was one threshold where we could start before Labor Day, because we had construction items going on. We don't currently have that. And I did reach out to a few, in virtual meetings, to a few legislators, specifically some ones that are in the seat that would probably make those decisions. There doesn't seem to be much appetite at all from the legislature to start, to allow districts to start before Labor Day, unless they're in an alternative setting.
Makes too much sense, that's why.
Yeah, why would they, why would they let us decide what the right thing for our district is? That's crazy talk. Okay, well, thanks for sharing it. Sounds like it was a good process. The next item is a policy review. We've got two policies that Matt sent out as well for us to talk about tonight that Matt's going to walk through.
Yep, absolutely. Actually, these do require two reads, but there's not really major changes to the policy. If you take a look at Policy 607, this is the organization of grade levels, and the purpose of this policy is to address the grade level organization of schools within the school district. And we've articulated what those are, elementary, intermediate, and secondary building, what grades are housed in each of our schools. The only thing that they added was, is that the school districts can require additional documentation that verifies a student falls within a school's minimum and maximum age requirement for admission to publicly funded pre-kindergarten, preschool, kindergarten, or grades one through 12. And it just lists what those documentations are. This is rarely used, but it is a new piece that came out from the Minnesota School Boards Association, and that's really the only change to Policy 607. Any questions? This will be a first read on tonight's meeting agenda as well.
No questions.
Okay. Well, the next, there are two that require two reads. Policy 608 is instructional services, especially in special education. And just most of the changes from the top in the middle of the page, again, it's not a very long policy as well, is really changes that just grammatically changes just the phrase of it. But they did remove, under Article Number 3, letter C, where it should be the ultimate responsibility of the superintendent to see to the development, administrative procedures, and practices necessary to deliver the appropriate special education services. I kind of wondered why they redacted that out of the policy. I have a few thoughts. One, it's pretty much explicitly implied that the district is responsible for providing these special education services. In fact, there's other policies that we have that speak to this as well. The only thing I could think of is that they wanted to be the ultimate responsibility of the district and not just one individual that would be responsible for that. So it's a district organization as a whole, is the thing that I can think of. I can probably get, Paul, we can make some inquiries with MSBA, but I'm pretty sure that it is articulated in other parts of policy, so it was redundant language.
Okay.
And truthfully, I did not personally redact it from the policy. It did come from the Minnesota School Boards Association, so.
Your responsibilities, are you?
So Matt, on something like that, then where do parents go to find that chain of command? Because when that was in there, a parent knew that if special ed services weren't being delivered in the right way, it was you they go to. This actually puts it on the school board, says the school board accepts its responsibility to identify, evaluate, and provide.
Yeah, and.
I'm assuming we don't want them coming to us when they're mad at level one.
No, no. And it would be just like any other processes that a parent may have a concern or a complaint. It starts with the teacher, then goes to the principal, then goes to the superintendent, and then hopefully that will rectify most situations. In addition, in our, in our district, we have the coordinator that's very much involved in those types of cases. So I think that this is just the general instructional services description of special education programming. But there's many, many other, in fact, there's many other addendums to policies that speak to due process in that, you know, it's all really governed by state law and federal law on the whole due process and the procedure. And I'm pretty sure that majority, if not all of our parents that have a student that's on IP, knows who to go to in case they're not, you know, if it doesn't work with the teacher, then it goes to the principal, maybe the coordinator as well gets involved, usually involves a team meeting as well.
Sounds good.
Okay, any questions on those two policies? Like Matt said, they're both on the agenda tonight for the first read. Next item on the work session is the COVID-19 update.
Yeah, just a couple of things that I can share with the board as a whole. I think I've been doing a pretty good job of keeping you up to date on a weekly basis. You know, we've made a successful transition to the less restrictive learning model. We're now beginning the second week of grades K through 5 in person, and grade 6 through 12 back to hybrid. So we're just entering our second week. We'll probably spend some time here, a minimum of a two-week time period, just to track our data. Most of our local and community data is still tracking in a downward trend. We had a little blip last week. We'll see how that pans out, at least at the county number. But school cases are really relatively very low. I just checked in with our coordinator earlier this morning, and things are going very, very well. So the things that we're doing in our schools, the safety mitigation features that we have in place are working. And so eventually here, we'll start having the discussion. In fact, we do have a meeting tomorrow, just to potentially look at a timeframe and what things that we need to do to start bringing the remainder of the district back in person, so we can get back to normal. So the key piece here is we want to make sure that we have enough school data to be able to make that recommendation to the Department of Health. And we want to make sure that we're doing this right, we're doing it safely. Ideas that we're looking at is we do a phased-in approach. So for example, we'd bring sixth grade back in the intermediate, and then on the same week, we would bring back grades, three grades in the high school. Which three grades, we don't know yet, but we would bring them back at three grades at a time. Then we would wait for at least two weeks to look at how things are going and see how things are with more bodies in the building than in a hybrid model, and then go from there. The key piece is, is that we want to make sure that we do this safely and with the appropriate amount of data to see how we're doing, because we don't want to go backwards. The name of the game is for us to move to a less restrictive model to eventually all in person and not have to go backwards. We want to make, you know, I think that would be very difficult. We're probably, though, going to see some potential quarantines come into place at potentially a classroom level. It just depends on the scenario and the situation. But we're just going to be pretty methodical about this next change. It's a big one. We did a big one last week, which was a big move for our lower grade levels. I think the energy in the, in the schools are great. Majority of our staff are very excited to get all their kids back doing what they're supposed to be doing. The next level, we just want to be careful and make sure that we look at all of the information and make the correct recommendation to the board when the time comes. And as far as vaccine updates, I did update the board last week. We were allocated six vaccines last week. All six employees that we established as high priority were vaccinated with the first shot last week, either Thursday evening, Friday evening, or Saturday during the day. We have 18 spots this week, and we will be, we are currently working. We had a huge increase. We are currently working on establishing who would be willing to get the vaccine in the second week phased-in pilot program. People have asked me, when, when does the pilot program end, and when can we get a little bit larger mass distribution of the vaccine? I'm hoping in the very near future. So we'll have to just see, but I think that there's some things that that hopefully come down from the federal government, and if we have a larger access to number of vaccines. The goal of districts would like to turn this over, like I've said before, turn it over to Wright County Public Health, and let's all en masse get the vaccine and be scheduled for the second booster shot. So. But right now, just based on availability of the vaccine, we're going to do this pilot program. We're going to continue to participate and get shots in the arms of our staff members as soon as we possibly can. And that's the update that I have for COVID-19. Is there any questions that people may have for me?
I think that's a good summary. I would concur. I think you've been doing a great job of keeping us apprised on a week-to-week basis. Thanks to everyone for all the flexibility, all the staff around the changes over the last couple of weeks. I'm pleased to hear that it's going well. Sounds like I haven't heard of any major glitches or any major quarantines or anything like that, so that's all a good thing. And you're right, I think we will probably start to see some here and there, especially with activities kind of starting back up again, but I know we're prepared to take it on. And I also agree that forward only, right, like should be our mantra. Like, wherever possible, I think we want to try to avoid this back-and-forth situation where we go in and then we have to go back to a hybrid or back to distance. I think that's going to be hard around the kids. So at this point, I, I think the approach of trying to be cautious is a good approach.
Hey, Matt, I watched the governor's newscast, or whatever you want to call it. There seems to be a much more open dialogue about keeping kids in school, getting kids in school, keeping kids in school. I mean, he seemed hell-bent on getting kids in school and willing to do whatever he can within the confines of keeping people safe and restricting people from getting sick. So, you know, we got that model last fall when we started, and we kind of quickly proved that it wasn't perfect. It was a good start, but it wasn't perfect. And we got well up into the hundreds of cases per 10,000, and we were still very safely operating the school. I didn't get from them that they were going to change that model specifically, but I did get that they have a very different mindset as to how to manage this down the stretch, and then also what next fall is going to look like. Have you gotten any indication? I know you have a call here and a call there. Have you gotten any indication from our experts as to are they going to change that cases per 10,000? Are they going to look more internally and more locally as the, how the school itself is doing? And if there is a COVID case, then send those people home?
Yeah, we actually, and probably the biggest misnomer is those 10, per 10,000 in a county level is really was the driving data, because we just didn't have any other school data, just to open up the school year. Now, as I've talked to the Department of Health and consultation processes and just exchanging an email, they are much more focused in on, how are you doing in the school? Do you have any school transmission? Are there any major outbreaks? And if not, they're definitely honing in on local and school data, because we've just taken drastic measures to keep people safe in our schools. And it's, and it's shown. We've had very, very small number of students that have tested positive. It's usually due to something outside of the school, but there has to be some close contact tracing. In fact, we had just two cert, two cases that came out, and both were not in school at the time, so we didn't, you know, there were no close contacts. And so I think there is much more, as we've learned, we've learned so much since the beginning of the school year, just on how we're operating and how we're doing it. And we're working still very diligently to keep everybody safe. We want to make sure that we're all smart about this. But it's more fixated on, what are you doing in your school? Yes, is the community data still important? It is. I mean, when it was getting up there quite a bit, it's just numbers. I mean, when it, when the virus is out there, it's in the community, it starts to affect a couple of other areas. Number one is staffing. So are you able to still staff a building when you have a number of staff members that are out? And we're very lean in our staffing. It doesn't take much, and we don't have the subs that we normally do in a current year to cover those things. But I think we're at a point now with the numbers and where we are with our, with our staffing, we're in a better place. But that is, you're right, Corey, they are fixating a little bit more on, on very scalped approach on how schools are doing in districts.
So follow-up question. You've made the point a few times that if the kids are in school, we can do all the contact tracing that we need. If they're not in school, unless the parents are calling us, telling us what's going on, it's harder for us to do that. So, you know, in November, December, the kids were out of school. Do you feel like we were able to continue contact tracing? Or are we just much better at it when they are in the classroom?
Invariably so. We're much better at it when we're in school. When we call parents, we just depend on parents giving us accurate information. The one other thing that we did track through the time when we were in distance learning, 4 through 12, is the county is able to give us per age group how many positive cases there are in our area. So we were able to age 5 through 11, we knew how many cases there were, age 12 through 18. Didn't identify the individuals, but we knew that. And we trended no more than 10 one week, or 10 or 13. In the last two, three weeks, we were under five. So I think that as this has gone on, parents are being a little bit more careful, and that helps. So that data is, but rightly so, when the kids are in the building, the communication from the parents, even when it's something that, there been a close contact to somebody outside of school, parents are very, very good at letting us know, because they know their kid's coming back into the building or not, depending on the situation.
So when they're in the school, we can trace them better. They're probably going to be healthier, probably. They're learning better. The teachers know where they're coming and going. I mean, you kind of stack those things up, and it gives us a pretty good recipe of how to manage this thing, if we can keep the numbers from going extreme, right? I mean, that's kind of what we've seen to have learned.
Yeah, that it's, it's the most, the best way to be contact tracing in any organization. A school does a better job than any other organization, whether it be a restaurant, a business office, or whatever the case may be, because we're required under law to be able to do this. And the Department of Health is right there with us to make sure that we do in the contact tracing correctly.
Okay.
Matt, I have a question. Where do our bus drivers fall as far as vaccine goes? Are we?
They're involved, they're, they're in the list.
So they're in our hierarchy of who's eligible and who's most likely to need one?
Yes.
Okay. And then number two, sports. Do we have any idea if Wright County Conference is ever going to open it up across the conference, or are we just staying with our home teams only?
I haven't talked to our activities administrator. That usually is a collective conversation between the 80s of the conference in conjunction with interpreting what we're allowed to do. So it's, I can check back with you, Rachel, on that, but I, I haven't talked to Ryan yet on the status of visitors and things like that. I do know that we had to make some difficult decisions just based on the current space, where certain activities are taking place. Sometimes it's diminished, sometimes it's not at all, just because we cannot meet the guidelines of what the Department of Health makes us, so.
I do like that they're making the effort to get the senior parents to do the jobs that are there. Gymnastics is doing that. We saw it with swim. It's just, it's a nice gesture to say, hey, we've got limited space, but it's your last year.
Exactly, yeah. And quite frankly, I'd have to say that the following on YouTube channels, watching it virtually, I think wrestling actually set the record. They were close, they were over 1,500 viewers on a wrestling match here, not too long ago.
For the 16 kids.
There was a lot of online watching through YouTube.
So classroom's the priority, there's no doubt, but I kind of, Rachel brings up a good question. There's a lot of ambiguity around the sports stuff and how decisions are made. It might be a good idea to get Ryan in here for work session in February and just chat through some of those nuances and challenges that he has. He's doing a good job. I, that is not a shot at Ryan, but I think he could take a little mystery out of it perhaps for us.
Sure.
If he's up for it.
Oh, absolutely.
I was impressed with how well Ryan and Julie had that running when we went to the wrestling tournaments. They had the list, they were just checking us off, making sure the right people were there. They do a great job, and the streaming has been awesome. Yeah, it's been really great.
Good to hear.
I assume, I sort of goes without saying that that channel, that YouTube channel is also being used for things like the one-act play and some of our non-sports activities as well, correct?
I believe so. I haven't looked on the calendar yet. I don't think we've had any performances yet in the one-act play, as far as I'm aware of. Maybe that's the month that we're in play right now.
Yeah, I know they're, I know they're gearing up for it. I don't have the calendar right in front of me, but.
It goes either this week or next week that they're going to be submitting a video to the competition.
Thank you, John. Yeah, and I just, we just want to make sure that it's not, doesn't become just the YouTube sports channel, right? I mean, I'm assuming it goes without saying that it's for all of our, all of our activities participants.
How many streams can we run at a time, do you know, Matt? Because I know like the one day there was like basketball, wrestling, hockey, lots of things going on on there.
Well, the guy in this room might be able to answer some of this.
How many streams can we run? Like, how many sporting events at a time can we run off of?
Or any.
The only limiting factor is going to be the amount of places we have. Ryan and I started with video cameras. We've got some extra growl. And I had available some patch, so we could use it for school coordination. But more recently, we found out there's a free application on an iPad called Free Month. And we've been able to use that, log in to YouTube channel for iPad. And then all you have to do is set up iPad and then just go watch the channel.
Yeah, it was awesome. We did that for basketball.
So everything gets scheduled in advance to YouTube channel, and then we'll provide with a key. Someone needs to hear tonight. You simply plug that key in, and it corresponds to what's been scheduled, and so we can run.
So we can stream everything we're doing locally?
Correct.
So someone's going to have to summarize that, because those of us virtuals didn't hear a word of it.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
I, we couldn't hear anything that he was saying, so can you just give us a 10-second summary of what he just said?
Absolutely. Basically, the bottom line is, is that we've got more bandwidth, we could stream anything we want.
Okay, great. Okay, well, that's a great update. Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions for Matt regarding either the vaccines or the learning model changes? Okay, then we can move on to our committee updates. We can hear some updates from Bridget and John to start with. Hi, guys.
Oh.
Hi.
I think Bridget's going to start us off.
Great.
Yes, so right off the bat, we, um, well, I noticed, um, that teachers already seem way more enthusiastic just having kids in the classroom. They're, they're just in way better moods already, so I think going hybrid has helped, um, teaching a lot. And also the start of the new semester has helped, just because, I mean, it started to drag on just all of our semester. So this week has definitely been really good, because it's just new. And then we also are just talking about K through 12. And so I'm, this week, I'm going to go to, um, seventh through 12 classrooms. And John is next week going to go to them, because he's not in school yet this week. And we're just going to grab a few kids at random classrooms and just discuss with them how they're feeling, because seventh and eighth graders, we're not quite sure. And we also are kind of interested in doing, um, some sort of an anonymous survey to see if kids tell us if they cheat, because we know, we hear from teachers, you know, us teachers know that there is an issue with cheating, but, you know, teachers probably aren't going to do a survey on it. But we're hoping that kids would be honest with us and do a survey with us if they cheat, because we're students with them. So that's our plan for seventh through 12. John can go next.
Yeah, on that note, it's, um, we have a few other questions, like, do they feel more comfortable taking tests in person or at home? And then we're going to compare that with the data from, with the cheating data. Do they, do they cheat when they're at home? Kind of get, kind of get a baseline for how that is, I guess, as a kind of a fun statistic, I guess. We also today emailed Mr. View and Mr. Hankner, and we're going to be asking just a few questions to them and a few questions to some of the students at those buildings, and just kind of see what's going on, how they're feeling, just kind of feel out the waters now.
Sounds good. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that there's a little bit of positive energy in the air with students being back. I know, starting a new semester, it always kind of feels good to just to kind of start, so get some different teachers, see some different faces, that's always good.
So is there some kind of data that is trending, that kids that normally had poor grades are now having good grades? And we feel it's due to the cheating?
I think that's something that we kind of want to figure out. Are grades going up? Are grades going down? Are, what's going on here? I think that'd be kind of interesting to see.
Yeah, I think that, um, the, we were just talking, um, I just, I'm in CIS stats right now, and Mr. Nohner was just talking about how it is very drastic. Either kids' grades dropped because of motivation issues, or kids' grades raised, not necessarily due to cheating, but wondering if that's like a factor. Because he said last year, his lowest grade was like a B, B-plus at the end of stats. And he's like, that's just weird, when it's a CIS class, and usually there are kids with Cs and stuff. So, um, there isn't really a baseline. We don't really know necessarily, but it'll just be kind of interesting to see if there's a trend. I don't know.
Sure. Maybe teachers are burned out and they just want to give As.
It's possible.
I kind of hope.
That's what we're here to figure out.
Thanks for the update, guys. Any questions for that? Okay, the next item is our MSBA Leadership Conference debrief. We thought we'd set aside a little bit of time for anyone who attended all or part of the conference to talk about some takeaways and what we learned.
Amy's trying to be district whatever.
Sorry, what was that?
Need your votes.
How do we vote for Amy, so that she can become the district leader?
I already got my ballot. Oh, I think I got an email too. I'm just saying, whatever it is, what are we nominating? What did I nominate you for?
The district director position for MSBA. I think they sent out an email.
Yeah, yeah.
With a link, Jim, so I think you just click that and vote away.
Will do.
I mean, for the, I attended, I've attended both days, kind of off and on, depending on work. And I thought it was, I mean, for what it is, virtual, I thought it's actually been pretty good. You know, there's been some good sessions to sit in and listen to. What was the one session we really, there was one session we both ended up, and it was really very good.
Oh, I thought you were talking about.
No, the one that, the, the law one, that means.
Yeah, we sat through a, a roundtable on school law, and I'm not going to share with children what we learned, because the things that are actually allowed that we can't do anything about, I don't want my children to know about.
But we actually sat through that twice, because he had really great, really great examples and stories, so I thought that was really, really good.
Yeah, he was a really good speaker. And then we sat through one on, what was it? Eh, like referendums.
Yes.
And Don Libdo.
Pretty much the really big advertising.
Yeah.
And so we left.
Yeah.
Went over to one on diversity and things like that. That is the bonus of this conference, is if you get really bored, you can just move right along.
I really liked that it was accessible. Like I haven't been able to attend in the moment, but I've been able to go back and watch the recordings, so I thought that was incredibly helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I did the same thing. I've been pretty busy at work these last couple of weeks, but I downloaded a bunch of content, and I have bookmarked a bunch of spots I want to go back and re-watch some stuff. So I just really like that aspect of it. I feel like it's a bit more on-demand. And most of those, when I, when we did attend them in person, there's, there's time for Q and A, but it was pretty superficial. So I feel like a lot of it is just kind of listening and taking it in and getting some content to take away, so it's pretty effective.
I didn't love that the, like, the week one recordings are gone now, you know, and like they're only there for so long, so maybe they'll change that, but.
Anyone else?
No, I thought it was really good. I think the virtual aspect does add an element of being able to, like what Rachel and Jenny said, move around to different topics more than you'd be able to see if you were there in person. So hopefully in future, they could do a both, potentially, right?
Yeah, we're already starting to have conversations, even within the school district of, you know, when we do get back all in person, or when we do certain meetings or do certain things of conferences within associations at the state level, is there's going to be people that will say, look, instead of me driving down in two hours to the cities to, you know, Minneapolis Marriott, can I have that access? Can I have that opportunity to just see some things? So that's going to require some logistical setups for what we're doing right now is facilitating and meeting the needs of, of participants, both virtually and in person.
I think the only thing that you really missed so is that every year at the, the leadership conference, you know, I've met a couple of people, right, you, you get to interact with somebody else and learn about their district, or like they have the student panel the one year, and I don't know if they'll bring that back this year or why not. And so you, you do lose that connection, and I think being at home, you do lose the focus. I've been able to sit through the four hours each day, but it's because I don't have a job, right? So I get that bonus, but you don't feel connected, you're engaging with the person next to you and having that conversation. And the question-answer being at the end or on the comment feed is a little bit harder than just raising your hand and saying, hey, what about this?
Yeah.
And so I hope they bring it back in person in some way, although I don't like driving down there. Where's that?
Yeah, for sure. I think the note thing is a big thing.
And I don't get any pens this year. I'm going to have to buy pens for this one last year.
All right, do we have any other committee updates that we want to go through?
Um, I can just give a quick update, and actually I can kind of put them together. I had both the Delano Advisory Committee and the Professional Development sitting in for. So, you know, both were kind of the, the, the same general statements that everyone is just trying to get their feet under them, getting back, going through a model change again, figuring out what's the right thing for their students, for themselves. So not a, not a lot to report, other than, you know, everyone is super busy, just trying to figure out how to, how to move forward. So, you know, overall, good, everyone's doing a fantastic job. But in terms of curriculum and everything that's happening, it's all focused on, you know, day-to-day, getting back, getting everybody where they need to be and moving ahead.
Right. Okay, well, that was the last item on the agenda. Does anyone have any other topics? Now, we'll have an extra little long break before we re, re resume at seven o'clock. But if nothing else on the agenda, then I would like to entertain a motion to move to recess.
I need to make that motion.
Jim will second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Jim. Any discussion? Let's move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Segwin? Mr. Girkey?
Hi.
Ms. Roser?
Hi.
Ms. Deppa?
Hi.
Mr. Black?
Hi.
Ms. Roseau?
Hi.
Ms. Johnson?
Hi.
All right, we're in recess. See everyone back here at seven o'clock.
I will stop the streaming and stop the recording, and then, then we'll just hop back on this, on, as we go. Or you could just leave it open too, and just turn your camera and your mic off.